Good evening at long last, we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, good evening once again and welcome. This is our first meeting of the summer, first and only meeting of the summer, so thank you for taking a break from your break and joining us tonight. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube, as well as on Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. First of all, I want to note that we have interpretation services available this evening in Spanish. Will the Spanish interpreter please raise your hand and introduce yourself en español? Gracias, thank you. And next, I did want to note, we are starting a little bit late, or later than it intended at least. It's about 5:50. We had intended to start at 5:30 tonight, and we're starting to trying out a new start time for our meetings. As some of you regular attendees might recall, we began our June meetings at 5:00 PM due to some very long agendas. And looking backwards over the last couple of years, our agendas have increasingly become lengthier and many meetings going until or beyond midnight. And so in an effort to try to rein that in a bit and keep our meetings to a reasonable hour, we've come to the conclusion to that 5:30 is a preferable start time. We did want to note that the 5 o'clock posed a hardship for some folks getting here on time from work or from their families or traveling across town at that hour of the day. So we took that into account and pushed the start back to 5:30. We hope to start using this start as our regular start time going forward. But of course, we want to hear from the public and we want to hear reactions to folks. So certainly if you're here tonight for public comment and you have a thought on the 5:30 start time one way or another, we certainly welcome you sharing that with us. And, you know, going forward, if you have further thoughts about that, as well as folks at home watching the meeting, you're certainly welcome to share it with us through email, either, I believe we have a feedback email, Liz, is that correct? Feedback@BostonPublicSchools.org, or directly to Ms. Sullivan or I. Our emails are on the website. Thank you. And also, speaking of public comment, if you'd like to speak this evening but have not yet signed up, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvex, out in the hallway. We had originally intended to close both public comment periods at 6:00 PM, which is in keeping with our practice, a half hour after the start, but seeing as we started a bit late, we'll keep that open till 6:15. And next, then, as you may have noticed, we have someone new sitting next to me this evening. On behalf of the committee, I want to extend a warm welcome to Dr. Brenda Casilius, who's making her first school committee appearance as a superintendent of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Thank you Chair LaTanto, and thanks everybody and all the other members here and school committee members. I first want to thank each of you for your incredible support during the search process, as well as selecting me. I'm humbled and honored to be the superintendent of Boston Public Schools. I look forward to working with all of you and the entire community in the endeavors that face us to increase achievement for our students and to embrace our families and to create high-quality schools throughout the entire system. I look forward to the engagement processes that we have. There's much to celebrate already in Boston Public Schools, but as we know, there's also much still left to do. And so I'm ready and excited to get started. I want to, again, thank you for your public service. Being school committee members is not easy. It's volunteer. It takes a lot of time, a lot of hours. And I sometimes will call you late at night and ask for your guidance and wisdom as we began to do some really hard work to address the inequities and the work ahead. So I already thank you in advance for that partnership. And I wanted just to take a moment to acknowledge the really difficult work that you all do every single day. I'd also like to thank everyone here at the central office and in our schools who have graciously welcomed me during my transition, who have opened up their offices and hustled to get me information that I asked for, data, or introduced me to new people and just have just been so wonderful and so warm. So I just can't thank the central office staff, principals, and school buildings who have taken the time to welcome me into their schools. And all of the community members as well, nonprofit foundation, foundations, philanthropic community. It's just been overwhelming, the support that I've been given, the warm welcome I've given, and the genuine welcome to Boston. So I also want to say, besides that, former superintendent, interim superintendent Laura Perrell was just fantastic in the transition, and she prepared documents for me. She led the transition and the team here and just was invaluable in giving me so much wonderful, all of her time. And so she turned over the district in good shape for me to take the reins and get going. And so I wanted to provide for you a little bit of a summary of what I've done during my transition. And so I wanted to share that since I was appointed, I have visited 16 schools. I've been to the Burke, the Charlestown, East Boston, Edward Middle School, Ellis Elementary, Frederick Middle School, the Guild for the Welcoming Schools Award. I've been to Madison Park, O'Brien Tobin School, Urban Science Academy, West Roxbury, West Zone Early Learning Center, and the Carter School. It's been wonderful and it's been a whirlwind experience to get into the buildings and actually see things. It is my plan to get into all 125 schools within the first 100 days. I was asked the other day by media, do I think that's possible? And I said, I'm not sure. I think I said, I'm not, maybe not, but I'm gonna do it anyways. So, and I've also met with partners, because we know how important partners are in this work. So I've met with about 23 organizations, many from diverse communities, as well as our Boston Student Advisory Council, some nonprofits, some philanthropic communities. I've had breakfasts and lunches and dinners with folks. And it's been a pretty amazing experience to meet so many people within the Boston community who really value our schools and want to see us do well and want to contribute. Lots of people raising their hands saying, how can I help? What can I do? And so once we get the strategic plan together and we start moving that forward, because we're in the last year of the current strategic plan, so beginning that and starting to think about what direction you all would like for us to take with the community and get some solid frames on that, we'll be able then to move forward with a very clear vision, a very coherent plan, and begin to implement that. Some of those items already immediately, as well as some of the longer-range items around Build PPS and around some of the facilities work and some of the academic, deep academic work that's ahead. I think that my most favorite things that I've done is working with the Boston Student Advisory Council, holding a roundtable discussion already. I have my first intern, a student, that will be starting on Monday, so I'm excited about that. I've also attended the valedictorian luncheon. I went to the pride parade. I've mentioned I was at the Guild for their welcoming school event, very proud of them. The Summer Learning Week and for courageous sailing. So I've been on the sailboats, I've been in schools. I go around now, people say, we see you everywhere. But I really am trying to get in and see. I saw a wonderful concert with the West Zone Early Childhood Learning Center in Jamaica Plain. I turned an event with student artwork at the John O'Brien School for Mathematics and Science in Roxbury. And I was interviewed by a student at Boston Latin School Newspaper. And I've also met with students and families at the mayor's coffee hours as well. So it's really just been an absolute wonderful, wonderful experience to transition. I am thankful that I had the opportunity to transition and get to know Boston a little bit better. I think I'll be a better superintendent because I better understand the community. As some of you may have heard, I have in my contract to move to different neighborhoods every year. In part, that's very intentional. I want to not only expand on the work and the learning that I will be doing naturally as superintendent, but there's a difference when you actually live in the community and you're a neighbor and you're going to restaurants and you're worshiping and you're walking down the street with your dog and just having informal conversations with people about their community. And I actually get to access and see the resources that children have. So that's really important to me, and I thank you very much for allowing me to be able to do that and to be of service to the community and the children and families. Just today, we, I wanted to update you, that we were able to work with the Jessica Tang and the Boston Teachers Union on the first, you know, signing of our MOU in the Boston Teachers Union around inclusion. So we are going to commence the inclusionary working group. And we will be inviting members, and so you'll see more information about that in the coming months and the work that we'll be doing around inclusionary practices within our schools for our students with disabilities. As you know, this is really important to them, being in their least restrictive environments, to be able to fully engage in the community and in the learning so that they thrive and can become all that they can become. I wanted to share with you a little bit about the values, visions, and goals that I've set for the organization. As I enter in, I thought it was really important to enter in with some core values to guide my work and my conversations with everyone and so that people got to know me and got to know kind of my leadership style and what my expectations would be as we interact with each other and become a professional learning community. So I tell you a short story. When I was first introduced to the principals, I came to them with four values. And I was talking about the value of collaboration, the value of inclusion, the value of having joy in the workplace, and also the value of equity. And it was Rachel Skerritt at the BLS School who was there in the audience and said, you know, if you add unity, you'll have juice. So then everybody kind of laughed and giggled like you are now and said, oh, we got juice. So now that's part of our lexicon in the early days of the district to say, you got the juice? You bringing the joy? Have you included everyone? Are you collaborating with partners? And are you focusing on equity? And so hopefully you'll hear a lot more about those core values. I have five key aspirational goals, and I talked a lot about these on my interview. And those are about an all-hands-on-deck approach. You've heard me talk about this a lot. Which is like, it's going to take all of us to really bring about change for our children and our families and our communities and to ensure that we are providing all of those outside resources that we know impact children when they come to us to learn. So we'll be doing a large focus on connecting with all of our nonprofit community partners, all of the philanthropic community, our higher ed partners, the city as a partner, the state house as a partner, in order to say, what are, what's those wraparound services that we can provide that are outside? Oftentimes, those aren't often connected. And we, as a school district, will be taking responsibility for our children to ensure that there's a connectedness to the holistic approach to educating our children and making sure that they're good citizens and that they have good health and well-being. Also, a goal is to raise the bar and close the gap, which is, it's the ability to ensure that our children are getting rigor across all of our schools, that we raise the level of expectation for our students. So you'll see me bringing recommendations over the next few months about rigor, about our curriculum, about our expectations for students, whether it's something as concrete as graduation requirements or whether it's about the way that we program days and what offerings and course offerings that we provide and programs that we provide to students. And we'll be working with the community and with teachers and with the experts on that. Creating high-quality schools in every neighborhood, I hear this quite often from the community that they want to have high-quality schools in every single neighborhood. They want to have choices and options for their children, workplace readiness skills and career pathways for their children, vocational ed, taking a strong focus on Madison Park. And I've met with the friends at Madison Park, which was a wonderful meeting. So just trying to work with the entire communities around our schools and around their hopes and dreams for their schools within their communities. And then doing some deep work with parent councils as well on that. Every student ready, this is about graduating and being prepared and hoping that all our students are properly launched and doing well in our schools and that they have the kind of supports that they need once they do graduate and that the diploma means something and that they do succeed when they go to college or in their career or in the military, whatever their choice may be. And then one that I added, and you heard about this, I think, in my interview, was that BPS become a top place to work, one of the top 10 places to work in Boston. This is really important, that people come to work, that they love what they do, that they're joyful working, and that they know that they're supported in doing this work for children and families. And so I'm hoping to do some deep work here around organizational values, our behaviors underneath those values, and how we interact with the community and the customer service that we provide to both the community and our schools. I've already said that I plan on my engagement to, plan will be to engage with the, going out to the 125 schools within the first 100 days. I will invite city councilors to that. I will invite the mayor to that. The elected officials also, as well as parents, community members, and people from the faith-based community. And I would invite private and charter school folks to be part of that conversation as well, because we are a whole community and we do want to collaborate with everybody. So I think that that's going to be over the next several months. Once school starts, we'll start that 100 days. So we'll start looking through September, October, November, hoping to have a working draft of some strategic items that are coming to the forefront and consensus that we're having on multiple items. And then having some of those strategic consensus items brought forward for working drafts to the committee for you to consider and to discuss. I wanted to just spend some, I don't know if you have any questions about that, but I probably, I see you guys taking notes, so I'll wait then. I'll finish my comments. So I want to be able to introduce my executive team, if that's okay?
Absolutely, please.
I'm so excited about my executive team. As you know, and you've probably read about most of them, but this is your first opportunity to meet them. I really dug deep into the organization to search for talent. As you know, I had a lot of private and also public conversations to look for who was already here in positions, who could we tap for talent? And how can I restructure the organization so that principals really felt supported? I believe strongly that principals are the lever of change, that they are the ones responsible for their schools. And they need to feel very, very supported and they have, they need to have clear lines of communication. So I chose people who have had school experience, who are very experienced within their fields and within their areas, and come with strong backgrounds. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce them if I can. And I'm going to ask the team if you might just stand for a minute when I call your name. And I'm going to go ahead and get started. So you see this wonderful, beautiful picture of the high school team. This is a dynamic, feisty, fired-up team of individuals. And I am so excited about these three individuals. I'm going to first introduce, no, no, you all three, look at that, they're already a team. They're standing up together. I'm gonna first introduce, um, no, no, you all three, look at that, they're already a team, they're standing up together. I love that. I'm gonna introduce um the newest member of the team, the newest face to you, Dr. Elia Brugerman. She is a um secondary school superintendent, originally from Mexico. Elia is joining us from Minnesota Department of Education where she worked with me as my assistant commissioner, specializing strategies to better serve multilingual learners and she's a former professor at the Minnesota State University and a former high school principal. She has a lot of experience with teacher equity and teacher diversity, as well as a strong background in special education and programming for ELL students. Dr. Elia Brugerman. Dr. Lynda McIntyre, who we all know is the state principal of the year and probably needs little introduction to you. She's been the star leader here at BPS for many years and most recently at the Burke Headmaster at Jeremiah E. Burke High School, leading it as the only school to exit turnaround status in the state um in two, twenty-fourteen. She's recently named the Massachusetts High School Principal of the Year, as I've mentioned. Tommy Welch, I heard that he is the mini-mayor of East Boston, he gets around so much and is beloved and running a five K, I think, every weekend. Um, he's most recently been leading our alternative high schools and will continue this work along with his leadership of additional high schools under this role. He's done an excellent job enhancing supports for off-track youth with an ongoing focus on early warning indicators. Before joining BPS in twenty-fifteen, Tommy was the founding principal of a middle school and a high school in South Central Los Angeles. So this is the high school team, can we welcome them? And we're gonna introduce the elementary team. And some of them are not here, um, but we will introduce some of them. Um, and I'm gonna go ahead and start with Mary Driscoll, who you all really know very well already. She's gonna continue leading many of our elementary schools as an elementary superintendent. She is most recently associate superintendent for elementary and middle schools. She's known for her instructional uh leadership and also has uh for many years was the principal of Edison School in Brighton where she oversaw major transformation of the school. Mary's knowledge has been incredibly invaluable to me. She has been a guide and uh has so much wisdom about the district and deep history and I highly respect her and thank you for saying yes. Marjorie Soto, who I don't think is here yet um this, this evening, um, it has been a long-term principal uh at the Hurley K A Dual Language School in the South End for the past fourteen years. Most of her career has been spent in multilingual education and she's also worked in schools in Providence and Philadelphia. And she told me she said no to central office several times, um, but she said she's been inspired by the vision and she wants to be part of the change at the district level and uh be part of this team, so I just thank Marjorie so much for stepping up and saying yes this time. Anna Tavares, who is on vacation. These are the principals that I brought up into the uh role because we need fresh principal eyes on the work that we do at central office. So intentionally, we tried to grab some principals uh and asked them to step up into leadership roles, but they also worked a hard year in their schools, so some of our principals are taking much-needed uh vacation. So to Anna Tavares uh has um joined the team as well. She is the principal at the Hernandez K A Dual Language School in Roxbury and has focused on bilingual education during her career of more than twenty-five years in urban education. Al Taylor, also probably needs no introduction. Um, Michael LaCanto, you once told me that I was seasoned. I think Al might have me on that one, that he's a seasoned educator, uh recently overseeing thirty-one schools as operational superintendent. Al previously worked with turnaround schools uh to accelerate student achievement and again has been just um such a solid rock for me in my transition, um, providing wisdom and counsel and I just very much thank you as well, Al. Grace Y., Elementary Superintendent. Grace will continue to support elementary schools as the elementary superintendent. She joined B, joined BPS in twenty-seventeen as academic superintendent. She previously served as Director of Curriculum Instruction and has a deep knowledge in, in curriculum instruction um in Massachusetts Public Schools and worked seventeen years as school principal in Lowell and Westford. And Grace loves data and loves systems thinking and so she brings that to the team and so thank you both. Andrea Zayas, who couldn't be with us this evening uh because her father has passed away, um, has also been named elementary superintendent, building on her work over the past year as academic superintendent and deputy chief of academics. Andrea has a breadth of experience, previously working as a turnaround superintendent in Camden, New Jersey and as a founding leader in an elementary charter school in Brooklyn, New York. Thank you, guys. I've also done some restructuring of the other positions to support um holistic uh learning and school turnaround and accountability. And so I'd like to introduce Sam DePina, Dr. uh Charles Grandson and Chief of Academics, Corey Harris, Chief of Accountability. Sam DePina, you all probably know really well as uh in BPS. He's now gonna be Chief of Student Supports, this is all the student-facing holistic pieces um to work on that all-hands-on-deck, to make sure that students are supported. His vast knowledge of BPS will be an asset in this area. Sam was most recently an operational superintendent and has done many jobs within the district, so has a, a wealth of knowledge. Dr. Charles Grandson will continue in his role as Chief, Chief of Academics. Charles is the former interim superintendent of Malden Massachusetts Public Schools and was deputy superintendent in Poughkeepsie, New York. He began his career as a humanities teacher in BPS and I've really charged Charles with the core work of our academics and bringing up the level of rigor, aligning that to our assessments and ensuring that teachers have good professional development. And so he'll be in charge of all of that this year, so we'll have a lot of plans and drafts to be bringing you. So thank you for that as well, Charles. And then Corey Harris, who was new to us. Um, he is the Chief of Accountability uh and Data and Accountability Turnaround Transformation and Community Hub Schools, focusing on strategies for continuous improvement. Corey come to, comes to us after six years uh being middle school director in Des Moines, Iowa. And also, I know Corey from Memphis, Tennessee, where he turned around a middle school there. Uh, and he was a excellent principal. And I know that I, I spoke with his superintendent briefly and he's the director uh through text and director of middle schools as well. And then uh you see these folks here that you know very, very well, Dave Murphy, who will become Chief of Staff, Monica Roberts, Chief of Engagement, and Rob Consalvo, Senior Advisor. All of you know these thr- three folks. Um, what I've done is um reposition them a little bit with Dave being the Chief of Staff. And he's done a tremendous job behind the scenes with all aspects of managing internal administration in the most recent role as Deputy Superintendent of Administration. Prior to this, Dave was Lead Labor Counsel in Union uh Contract Negotiations. His oversight includes the uh Office of Human Capital, Finance, Operations and um Communications. He has been a right-hand to me uh ever since I was appointed and uh couldn't have done this at all without uh Dave's help. He's just been absolutely a rock and so I thank him so very much. Similarly, Rob Consalvo will become Senior Advisor to the Superintendent, another gentleman who needs no introduction. Uh, he tells me it's Hyde Park, did I get that right, Rob? Not Hyde Park, but Hyde Park. I'm working on my Boston accent. Um, he's um helping, helping to manage intergovernmental affairs uh at, like he's always done and uh community relations and community issues and that's so important to the work that we do, working very closely with Monica as well on the, our engagement plan. Um, as all, as you all know, Rob always introduces himself that he is also a BPS parent of three children and served twelve years as city councillor for Hyde Park and he's very proud, uh proud of that. Monica Roberts, Chief Engagement Officer. Monica is continuing to serve as our Chief Engagement Officer overseeing our community engagement teams in the Office of Engagement along with Welcome Services and Family Community Partnerships. And this is a, a really important role for me as I've talked about, authentic community engagement and some of the really creative ideas that she has and the two of us together, I'm really, really excited about. Um, and going out um over the next uh three months and also the next year to really engage families deeply on the strategic work as well as ongoing um throughout um this administration. So, did, did Monica, Dave and Rob all stand up? Um, then I would also like to introduce John Hanlon, who you know already is the um Chief of Operations, Dr. Emily um Cozobash and Chief of Human Capital, Eleanor Lawrence, who is the Chief Financial Officer. Are they here? Back there? Okay. John Hanlon, whose division includes transportation, facilities and food services. John is a parent of four BPS students. Um, and then um Dr. Emily Cozobash, I'm still getting all the names right. Chief of Human Capital Officer, leads our Office of Human Capital, a critical department that oversees hiring along with teacher recruitment and retention, has done all of the wonderful hard work of making sure all of these folks have um all their new titles and um that we're still getting uh schools started right with all of our teachers and principals being in their positions as well, so just thank you so much. And then Eleanor Lawrence is our Chief Financial Officer, who does a tremendous job managing all aspects of our budget of more than one billion dollars and she's gracious, graciously agreed to remain on board despite announcing her planned departure from BPS until we find her successor and I just can't thank Eleanor enough for her incredible commitment to this organization. So that's the entire team, I know that took a little bit longer than what I had anticipated, but I think it's important for you to know who they are um and to, to know who you'll be interacting with and I'm just so proud of, of this team and excited for the work that we have coming forward.
Well, thanks so much, uh Superintendent, and um, you know, I uh, I think that uh began as just a, a quick introduction and welcome and bled into a bit of a superintendent's report, so I'm gonna give uh my fellow colleagues an opportunity to uh ask any questions or make any comments at this time before we move on to the remainder of the meeting. So I'll open up the floor now to uh committee members. Dr. Coleman.
Well, great, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, and I particularly appreciate your contact, being open to community and the time you spend, I think that's spectacular. Uh, and I, and I want to affirm your focus on human capital, that's where the rubber meets the road. And as we do that well and we make great strides in that area, so continuing that's very important. Um, and then, and, and I, I appreciate you stating principals as the lever of change as we struggle with this issue of autonomy and, and accountability and getting a sense of how you, you want to leverage that conversation. And I don't, but I, and I don't need this now, but I'm very interested in kinda getting a, a better sense of the structure of how you're structuring this, the, the secondary and elementary principals. What's the hierarchy, who's reporting to who? What does that really mean in terms of supervising the principals, is this gonna be a network? And so I'm looking forward to hearing that in more detail, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Dr. Rivera.
Oh, 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 yes. Sorry, I.
Of course.
I read my, I should keep reading my notes, right? Um, remarkable appreciation of the diversity of leadership that you bring on. I mean, I, I really wanna call, when you look around Boston, you look around the nation, the diversity of your staff is, is a great way to start and really uh addresses some of the issues where many people in the community are concerned about, so I appreciate your commitment to that, the, the, the visible representation, that commitment.
Thank you for that, Dr. Coleman. Dr. Rivera.
So yes, uh, again, congratulations, Dr. Casilius, we're really happy to have you, um, looking forward to working together. Um, just again, wanna thank you um for, yes, as um Dr. Coleman has said, for also bringing in some strong leadership around English learners. Um, I think that that's something that, again, as the co-chair of the Task Force on English Language Learners, um, really, we're looking forward to, to working with you very closely and addressing those gaps affecting that particular student population. Um, and yeah, and I hope that you'll invite all the committee members to visit the schools. I'm, I'm, I'm the newest member, I would love to visit all one hundred and twenty-five schools, uh, but not within a hundred days. But yeah, so I hope you'll make that schedule available to all of us.
Absolutely.
And welcome.
You're more than welcome to come.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera, Mr. Tron.
Welcome aboard and uh thank you for uh making sure that um there is diverse. I, I like to echo Dr. Coleman, looking at your executive team, I, I really appreciate the fact that it is reflective of the diversity of the city. And the only thing that I would like to keep reminding you um is uh please, within the, the, the um, you know, the five words, uh five par- uh five uh uh, the, you know, five, whatever you call that, I forgot. I, I would like to make sure that equity remains number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tron. Vice Chair, Aviva Davila.
Um, thank you very much, Chair. Um, I also would like to um officially welcome you. Um, I know it's your first meeting and you're off and running, so we're really excited to have you here in Boston. Um, and I look forward to working with you very closely. And um I know it's been said before, but I just think it's extremely important to really note the diversity of the team. That is, that is a big deal in Boston and I appreciate um that you, I know you were watching our school committee's uh meeting when we voted and I really appreciate you taking to heart and really making sure that we elevated people within our district and not just, you know, it's great to bring new blood, of course, we welcome new people, um, but we also wanna make sure that we constantly have people on the bench and we can promote people. Um, and obviously, um, as I had mentioned in that school committee meeting, the invisibility of Latinos. Um, and so it's good to see some of the se- very seasoned um principals that you're bringing on the team um and the, the dual language and the focus on ELL and then putting front and center um opportunity achievement gaps. And I hope to learn um from your powers of persuasion of how you got some of these people to come to central office. I think that's fantastic, so I wanna congratulate you, I can see you have the juice, so welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, well, although your first day was July first, we know you've been, uh, as you pointed out earlier in your presentation, crisscrossing the uh, the city at a feverish pace since uh your appointment in May, so we're truly indebted to that. And we know you've been engaging with stakeholders and learning as much as you can, as quickly as you can, both about the city as well as our district and our students and our children. And uh so we're thrilled to finally welcome you uh officially aboard. And as many of you all know, uh, the school committee selected Dr. Casilius for, among many skills and qualities, her commitment to equity and community outreach. And the committee shares these goals and we look forward to seeing Dr. Casilius in action as she continues our work to tackle some of our most urgent efforts. And as you heard, in, in her listing of goals, certainly closing the opportunity achievement gaps, being the first in the nation to do so, uh, as well as organizing our district to deliver the high-quality teaching and, and learning and resources that support that teaching and learning in every classroom across this city. So we welcome you once again, Dr. Casilius, and uh best of luck, we have our support and gratitude. Uh, so um, I'm gonna consider that, uh, the superintendent's report. So if there's uh no further questions or discussion, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion or entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report as uh presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to receiving the report by unanimous consent? We're hearing none, uh, the motion is approved, uh, the report is approved, excuse me. We're gonna circle back just for a moment and um approve the minutes from the uh June nineteenth school committee meeting. Uh, if the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, uh, you can ex- uh access these minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. So at this time, I'd like to also entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June nineteenth, twenty-nineteen meeting as presented. Dr. Rivera. Uh, it sounds like a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to hearing the motion, uh, excuse me, approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Move on now to bub- uh, public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining and then thirty seconds. Those who require interpretation services will receive additional two minutes. Speakers may not resign their time to others. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have three speakers this evening and we'll begin with Siobhan Roach. She'll be followed by John Mudd and Peggy Wiesenberg.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Thanks for having, giving me the opportunity to speak today. Uh, my name is Siobhan Roach and I'm he- and I'm here to represent the Access for All Initiative, which is led by parents in Charlestown and supported by city councilors Edwards-Wu and Asabi George, to create more opportunities for students to join BPS, especially in K-1. I know while Mayor Marty Walsh has committed to expanding K-1 over the next five years across the city, we need more spots sooner, especially speaking in Charlestown where there are a growing number of families looking to stay. Personally, I grew up in Roselandale and I attended BPS at the Philbrick in K-1 and K-2 and then joined Boston Latin later, later in life. So I'm a product of the Boston Public School system and want nothing more than to have my own sons join BPS as well. I now live in Charlestown. And right now, my oldest son is on the waitlist. Our best waitlist option is number 13 at the Harvard Kent, which was previously 24. So great to see movement. We were 57th at the Warren Prescott and 89th at the Elliott. In Charlestown, we are unfortunately kind of surrounded by non-Boston sort of neighborhoods in Somerville, Everett, East Boston, or, sorry, not East Boston, Chelsea, that it's difficult to send young children on buses, that there might be a spot further away from our neighborhood. So as more and more families, you know, want to stay in Boston to reap the benefit of a short commute, ample diversity, its history and culture, we need Boston Public Schools to create more opportunities to get families and children off to an early and positive start with Boston Public Schools so that they stay in the city and can contribute tax dollars, time, and effort into making our schools and communities successful. Therefore, as a part of the Access for All Initiative, we're asking that there are more spots in high-performing schools across the city so that all kids, especially those in most need, can get access to high-quality education. More transparency would be great from BPS in how and when waitlists move, where there's sibling preference. 29 out of the 44 spots in the Warren Prescott were given to siblings of older children. And then, BPS to encourage faster response times from parents on their top choice so that waiting lists can move faster and parents can have more time to make a decision for their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. And I see you have written comments. If you wouldn't mind sharing a copy with Ms. Sullivan, we'll distribute it to the members.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mudd. He'll be followed by Peggy Wiesenberg.
Good evening.
Good evening. John Mudd, Advocate Emeritus. I also want to join the others and welcome you, Superintendent Casilius, and commit myself to doing whatever I can to support you in the goals of reducing achievement gaps and improving education for all our students. I wanted tonight to talk briefly about the issue that Dean Coleman raised, and that question of school autonomy and principal accountability. BPS takes great pride appropriately in developing a system of school autonomy where principals and their school site councils have been given significant authority in collaboration with, as I said, with their school site councils over major decisions like hiring, curriculum, professional development, and other key educational matters. I strongly support this. I agree, principals are the linchpins of a change. But this goal should be decentralization, not autonomy. Decentralization involves giving authority to frontline administrators to implement school committee policies better than could be accomplished if the decisions were made centrally. But empowerment and autonomy without accountability is balkanization, operating like a set of sovereign states, not decentralization. As such, as much as BPS is committed to the empowerment and supportive principles, it must also be committed to a system of mutual accountability for improving student performance and community engagement, both by school leaders and central office leaders. Decentralization implies that there is a center and a role for the center. I hear a lot of talk about empowering and supporting principals, but they are given the power to hire teachers in order to create the education teams that can provide an opportunity to learn for all students in their schools. If they don't use that power to implement BPS policy to diversify teachers so that they match the students in their schools, for example, then they must be held accountable for that. A culture is developed within BPS around school autonomy that is dysfunctional. Some central staff seem to be afraid to hold principals accountable for implementing school committee and district policy. This goes way beyond a culture of compliance, which is equally dysfunctional. What if a principal doesn't diversify teachers or engage parents or fails to hire teachers who can speak the language of their students? Who will hold a principal accountable for that? What is in their core evaluation? The problem is, in some ways, compounded by the fact that there are surveys of principals to rank central departments. And those department heads know they will be judged on those rankings. That's a two-edged sword. Central department leaders must be accountable for supporting principals, but they all must, but they must also be accountable, I would say empowered, to hold principals accountable. If the message from the school committee and the superintendent to central department heads is just support principals to get good ratings, then you have to understand that the message to these department heads is also, don't try to hold principals accountable for what they aren't doing or don't want to do. A singular and misplaced focus on autonomy without accountability will not enable BPS to become the national leader in overcoming achievement and opportunity gaps and preparing our young people to be productive and engaged members of society. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peggy Wiesenberg.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Wiesenberg. I'm an Access to Justice Fellow and a parent of three BPS grads. I'm here tonight to comment on an in-kind donation. It's not a grant, it's not an action item, but there's an unusual grant of substantial funds, which are very welcome, from Boston Children's Hospital in partnership with United Arab Emirates. Donation of a soccer field for the Haley Pilot School. And it caught my eye for a number of reasons. To my knowledge, as a longtime Boston parent, I've never known a country to donate funds to the public school system. But I am most interested, since we have a Build BPS plan that's systemic to look at all the schools, there's a section in the end on athletic facilities. And it says that BPS needs to assess the quality and availability across what we call a mixed-delivery system because we work with private facilities as well as public facilities and rent facilities and so forth. In any case, I do think we need a systemic look. And while donations are welcome, in the past, under Mayor Menino, there was a schoolyard initiative. It was a collaboration of multiple funders. It, over 18 years, provided upgrades for 88 schoolyards, including the Haley School. So I would hope that, under your leadership, we could convene, and Mayor Walsh's leadership, a more systemic group to look at where the need is, what the sequencing is, what the timing is, what the priority is, and where it's needed most. When I first moved to Boston and had children, I had to take, I had lived in the bottom floor of a triple-decker with no yard. And I had to take my children to Brookline to find a playground. We lived two blocks from the Agassi School, which is now the Mission Hill School. There was no playground. So it's, it's a big issue for people in the neighborhoods, particularly now. We need to have safe and wonderful places for kids to play so they can get juice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg.
Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on now to a report on the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and United Steelworkers Local 2936, better known as our bus monitors. We're proceeding a little bit out of our normal order tonight in order to hopefully approve this contract and provide contractual wage increases and other benefits to some of the workers that are closest to our students in this district. Following this report, the committee will take action on the proposed agreement along with the related supplemental appropriation requests later this evening during the action item portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'd like to invite, she's already up here, our BPS Labor Relations Director, Ms. Lisa Mackey, to please join us and give us a presentation. But first, I'd like to ask the superintendent if she's got any opening remarks.
I do not. I think Lisa's got this one.
Ready.
Thank you, Dr. Casilius. Good evening, Chairman LaCanto, committee members. My name is Lisa Mackey. I'm the Director of Labor Relations for Boston Public Schools. Hoping we can get the deck on, but in the meantime, I will just go over the basics of the timeline. Sorry about that. This is the presentation on a tentative agreement between the Boston School Committee and the bus monitors. Thank you. There was a tentative agreement reached on June 5th, 2019. The bus monitors ratified the agreement on June 21st, 2019. Tonight is the presentation and vote on the tentative agreement and a request to the mayor for supplemental appropriation. Some of the basic information of the agreement, this is a 500-member bargaining unit. The contract is for four years. There's a one-year contract and a three-year contract through 2020. 2% wage increases over four years, which is consistent with our other bargaining partners. The monitors in this contract also received some changes to how paid time off works. Monitors are now able to receive a paid day off in the fall and also one in the spring. This changes from our previous agreement with the bus monitors where days off were obtained only by attendance and then they carried over. This provides equitable access for paid days off for our monitors and also helps, helps the Transportation Department with tracking and ensuring that we have monitors in place. The total cost of the agreement is a little over $1.7 million. Some operational highlights, improvements to operations that we received in this contract were in order for students to be transported safely and on time to school, which is a core value of the Boston Public Schools, which prioritizes students' learning first. The parties agreed, tentatively agreed, the bus monitors will now report absences prior to 4:30 a.m., which allows additional time to ensure standby operators are assigned to routes. And bus monitors will be now tapping in and out of their buses every day and in and out of the bus yard. This tap system will provide useful data that will inform the district and help make them make data-driven operational and financial decisions moving forward. And these improvements will help improve the on-time arrival of students to school. So with that, if there is no questions, I request that the tentative agreement be approved and that the school committee request supplemental funding from the mayor.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Mackey. I believe, Superintendent, you wanted to add something?
I did. I just wanted to share that Ms. Mackey and myself met with the bus monitors today, the union leaders, and it was a really good and productive meeting. I'm excited about, you know, the bus monitors are the very first face that our children see in the morning. And I just wanted to be sure that they felt valued and supported as, as employees of this district and a really integral part of children's successful day in our schools.
Well, thanks so much, Superintendent. I'm looking around briefly to see if there's any questions or discussion from the membership. Seeing as none, I do want to commend you on the work. I know this has been a long time coming with respect to a contract that did expire in 2016. And so we're happy to get this one nailed down at a reasonable rate and also achieve some of these operational efficiencies that'll help us better operate our bus and transportation system as we move forward. So thank you very much. We look forward to taking action shortly.
Thank you very much.
Well, now, we will indeed move on to the action item portion of the meeting. And our first action item this evening is the consent calendar, which consists of one international travel request, grants for approval totaling $2,178,807, and in-kind donations with a total estimated value of $279,788.51. I'd like to turn it over once again to the superintendent for any final comments.
I don't have any final comments on these grants and action items at this time.
Very good. Very good. I will open it up now to the members for questions and discussion. It looks like Dr. Coleman has a question.
I have, I have an observation and then a question. As I was going through the grant for approvals, I just want to point out, and I think this is something we want to work towards. It's like all of these school resign grants, it's like we're talking in different universes, right? So, and as if we're in the small, a much smaller school district. And I'm believing in the autonomy piece, the lack of coherence across these different challenges was remarkable. That may be fine, but it just stood out for me and I think as we go forward, I'm hoping that there'd be more coherence and the type of interventions we're running across the various schools who are facing similar problems, which would lead to, as we have mobility in our district, more coherence when kids experience it. So that's an observation, not a criticism, but just an observation that I would like to go for. My question, I think, was brought up earlier about, is this soccer field grant? I'm a big believer in philanthropy and I'm a big believer, and I understand that getting people with finances to give to us and various issues, we have to respect the donor's wishes. And that may not always lead to equitable access that we would prefer to have. So in this case, I would like more of an explanation as to what's going on with this grant. Why are we choosing this? How did this school get it rather than others? Was there a call for proposal? What was the process? And it could be a donor-driven decision. I'm not uncomfortable with that, but I'd like to understand it.
Yeah. I'm going to call up John Hanlon and Rob Consalvo to speak to that. Thank you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
And if this is the first of 20, then we could stop.
I would just say in general, to answer your question about equity and selection of grants, grants and in-kind donations need to be part of the overall strategic plan. And equity across our schools is really important to me. And so as I began in my tenure and start to unpack where we have grants, where we have fundraising happening in schools, where we have opportunities for athletics, they will be based and steeped in where it's most needed. And it will be part of the strategic plan. It'll be transparent and people will be able to see what's coming, why it's there, why we selected it very clearly well ahead of time. And so just know that that will, that will be addressed. Your concern will be addressed in the future.
And I'm excited about that. And variance is okay.
Yeah.
The variance is okay, but we want it to be transparent.
That's right. And just knowing where. And just to speak, you know, I really, really believe in athletics and opportunities for children to participate in athletics. So that's something that's on my radar as well as arts programming, because when children are connected to the arts and to the athletics and to clubs and debate and other activities at school, they're more apt to want to come to school and their attendance improves and they feel more connected and part of the whole school community. And so we want to make sure that those enriching holistic opportunities are available at every school. And that, to me, is a definition of a high-quality school. And so as we begin to do this engagement process, one of the things we will do is define what is a high-quality school. When I was commissioner, I would go around talking about these things when we were doing our ESA work and trying to define our new accountability system. We had quality indicators. And I asked parents in the audience to raise their hand, "Did you have a librarian?" Everybody raised their hand. "Did you have gym every day?" Everybody raised their hand. "Did you have a nurse?" Everybody raised their hand. And I said, "Why is it that we can't provide these things for our kids then?" And so I, you know, this to me is really important work coming forward, so.
On behalf of Rob and certainly Rob, feel free to weigh in. We're both very excited about this donation of a soccer field. Certainly equity is foremost in everything that we do. And we're happy to say that the school was chosen partly because it serves an underserved population, but also there were other important considerations that were part of that. For example, the lack of outdoor athletic space that the Haley has, the very accessible nature of the school so as to attract other members of the community and not just the school population. And then in addition to that, very importantly, from the perspective of this program, which actually has had roots in 10 other cities. This is a community soccer program that the United Arab Emirates has run out of its consulate in Washington, D.C. and has served 10 other cities, 11 other soccer fields. Boston is simply the latest in that list. The Haley was also chosen because they have a strong partnership with America Scores, which is an educational and soccer program onsite serving children, but serving them without really the proper infrastructure that that school would need to properly roll out that program. So very excited that Boston was chosen as the next city. Very excited that the United Arab Emirates is in partnership with Children's Hospital and it's been a very close three-party collaboration for many months now. Has chosen BPS to move forward on this project. And certainly delighted that the Haley has been, has been chosen due again to the central location of the underserved nature of the children, the need there that we have, and the partnership onsite with America Scores.
And I would only add, that location actually sits at a unique spot, really where three neighborhoods kind of come together. Everything to the east is Rosendale, to the north is Hyde Park, to the west is Matapan. And they all kind of converge at that spot. You could take a right up Cummings Highway, get to Rosendale, go straight down American Legion Highway, go to Hyde Park, take the left up Waco Street and get into Matapan. So that, that school, both during school hours and in non-school hours, will be a site where people can use that field from all three of those communities.
Great. And so the logical question would be from around the rest of the city, how can I get some, right? So we just need an answer for it. I'm not disputing that decision. Sounds great, but we need that answer. How could, what would have to happen for other people to get their resources in East Boston?
Yeah, if anything, I think this is a sign that the school district is, and this isn't the first time, but we are very interested in public-private partnerships so as to leverage outside funding in order to do more with Build BPS. As a public commenter mentioned already, there has to be some mentioning of athletic facilities within our infrastructure plans. As Dr. Casellius has mentioned, we do need to pay mind to our athletic facilities, which do need a lot of attention. And we're happy that that's, that's the arena, forgive the pun, where a lot of outside donors actually want to help. So we're in the process of exploring those opportunities as much as we can.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First, on this matter, thank you. And Superintendent, my apologies, and Chair, my apologies for being late. The traffic from Charlestown with that rainstorm was just phenomenal. So I don't know how the Charlestown mother made it early. She must have left about four to get here. So I apologize, Superintendent, for missing your first superintendent's report. On this issue, were, was it publicly known that there was going to be a decision made? Did other schools get a chance to raise their hand and say, "Hey, we'd love to have a field of other school communities"? And, and more importantly, how could we do that in the future? Particularly, Mr. Hanlon, as you mentioned, that there are other folks interested in helping us. How do we make sure that this isn't just an internal BPS decision? You know, it's one school, which in this city means, you know, 17 other neighborhoods saying, "You were unfair to our neighborhood," or maybe about 15, Mr. Consalvo, since you said you covered three here. So just help me out with the, what the process was, because, Mr. Hanlon, you said the Haley was, was selected. Just help me out with the process, please.
Sure. So we looked at a number of sites based on conversations internally between our office as well as the Athletics Department and the Facilities Department. We prioritized areas of the city that were central to the city so as to attract the largest number of students or be central to the largest number of BPS students and schools. We worked with the Children's Hospital team and the United Arab Emirates team on a shortlist of facilities that, you know, all included those same sort of metrics. Underserved population, population hubs near multiple neighborhoods if possible, lacking infrastructure, those, those kinds of pieces. And ultimately, the Haley school is the one that, in a sense, checked the most boxes. This was not broadly advertised to all principals. Knowing that we can only choose one school, you're then, you would then be setting up a situation where there would be, and I forgive the term, but many, many losers and only one winner. And again, forgive the term, but I know that's how sometimes it's portrayed. In addition to that, I think when things like this come up, we have to, we have to do a good job of making sure that it's fair and equitable for sure, without question. But we also have to do a good job to guard against any particular school-based advocacy efforts, because some schools can do that better than others and simply do what we think objectively is the best for all parties involved.
And I would just, just add the space, the physical, the physical space to the right of the school lends itself to a perfect spot for the sort of soccer pitch, half soccer field, as well as the, I think John mentioned it, but I want to underscore, the unique partnership and the very highly regarded partnership that the Haley has with America Scores, which is a soccer program already embedded in the school.
I would, I would simply say that I thank you for your work on this, and I know this was a one-off deal. When opportunities arise in the future, I think it would be beneficial in the interest of transparencies that schools are made aware of the opportunity and you tell them what the selection criteria is going to be and that there's a scorecard that you're going to be rated on and the winning school is going to get it, very simple. And then that way, we avoid, and just like in weighted student funding formula, we say what the formula is and here's what it is and no one, people now dispute what the weights are and what the enrollment things are, but there's no longer enrollment projections are. But there's no longer a sense of favoritism for schools. And that's what we're trying to avoid. And so in the future, hopefully we have more of these opportunities. And I'm only saying this, Mr. Hanlon, because you say there may be more coming. Maybe not this necessary program, but others have offered to help. And so the more transparent we can be, the more people see that we're not playing favorites and that we're doing it on an equitable basis. And I know that's what's in your heart and I'm, and I'm sure if we dug in on the particular decision, we would see it. Just from the outside viewpoint, it may be helpful.
Yep.
So that was only my, my only question on this comment. I do have a question about the EDFI grant. I think if Mr. Racine could join us, that would be great. If, may I move on to another grant?
Sure. Is this something that the superintendent might be able to answer or?
I, I.
EDFI, I think.
Okay.
I need Mark on that one. I have a quick answer.
We don't want to put her on the spot. It's only week two.
If the superintendent knows these answers to these questions, God bless her.
I know about EDFI, but this particular grant, I think it probably, the technical nature would probably be best answered by me.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Racine. I noticed it says the funding source is private. I'm assuming it's the EDFI Alliance?
It's actually the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation.
Okay, which funds the EDFI Alliance. Right, okay. And I'm wondering, how many vendors are now using the EDFI? You mentioned three or four on the back here. Elevation, illumination, and panorama are going to be doing downloads by a certain time. But how many vendors are now using the EDFI? In other words, is, what I'm getting at, has it been worthwhile? And I know you pushed us being on EDFI. The state is not yet on it.
No.
But we are, right, as an individual district?
Yes. The state is using a different protocol called CIF. So we are using both at the same time, but they are technically two different protocols and purposes. The number of vendors, I can't give that off the top of my head. I want to say it's in the hundreds so far. Obviously, those are not all the vendors that we are using. But we are moving forward with every new vendor and every new application that we bring on, that the vendor has to be EDFI compliant. And if not, then they need to work with us to build the connector to use that.
Do you feel it's working?
Yeah, it's, it is a, it's a technology that's not going to roll out overnight. It has transformed how we've integrated with applications internally so far.
Were you able to pull reports from different, different vendors and different systems better now?
Yes, absolutely. And the other piece that's, that we're adding on to it this year is an early warning indicator system that will visualize the data that's in the operational data store. So taking EDFI right now is more of a backend data system. And then putting on a visualization on top of it is our next work this year to give guidance counselors, registrars, teachers, and principals a quick visualization of all the data across all the data systems in our.
For early warning indicators.
Yes.
At what point are we going to have a data dashboard, as Dean Coleman has always asked for, that starts at the school committee level, high level, and then to the superintendent, then to the academic supes, et cetera?
That is, that is this exact project. So we piloted a system over the last few months with our high schools. And that project had a dashboard at the district, principal, and teacher level. And so we're going to be expanding that, that project during that demo, or excuse me, that system this year to include all high schools. So that will have a superintendent's dashboard, any principal and a teacher dashboard included.
How about school committee level one?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll start at that and then full, and when roughly would you anticipate we'd be able to see something like that?
That's a hard one to answer right now. I want to say by winter time, we'll have all of our schools within, all the school data within that visualization tool, even though this year's pilot is focused more on the high schools.
Okay. And lastly, how come the state hasn't adapted EDFI? You said they may, they use a different protocol. I'm sorry?
Minnesota does, right.
Minnesota has, Tennessee has.
Number states do, yeah.
Yeah, so at the time when the state was rolling out CIF, there were two different purposes. And so EDFI is really a backend data system to store the data, which is something that is more geared towards local districts or being able to consume it at the state level. The state in Massachusetts chose CIF. Why they, they chose CIF over EDFI, I believe at the time that CIF was the stronger of the two. EDFI was more of a recent technology and that's one of the ones that we've adopted.
But you found it helpful in Minnesota?
Oh, yeah. We have a number of school districts in Minnesota that had very different student information systems. And so trying to get that brought in to have more consistency and better data into the system. So that was, and then to be able to report out, back out to the community, it's been great. We were transitioning to EDFI.
And my last question, just since you mentioned the state, do you use the radar system on the state? Pull data down?
No.
Does our data team use it, do you know?
I'm not familiar with the radar.
Okay. It's the one that allows you to compare to other districts across the state.
Oh, I think maybe Edwin. Is that the, the name that you're referring to?
I knew it as radar, but I'm not sure.
I'll check in with our.
Okay, no problem. We'll talk about that later. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yes. All set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Are there any further questions or discussion for the consent calendar? We're hearing none. I do just want to thank, once again, I see we have our representative, Mr. Reardon, from Children's Hospital here tonight. The work the Children's Hospital has done to broker the donation of the soccer field in particular, we're greatly indebted to the work that you've done with the district in bringing that in and making us the 11th city across the nation to receive a contribution of this, this type. And, you know, certainly the work of the district. I'm sure it's hard to find a spot somewhere in this city that can actually fit a soccer field. So, you know, making that work happen and finding a, a school that might be able to take on something as valuable as that is, is an admirable task. So bless you.
And we'll take 10 more, right?
That's right, yeah. We'll, we'll find the room, I suppose, you know? Build a green roof or something. But in any case, I did just want to note our gratitude for the UAE and Children's Hospital for supporting wellness and, and exercise and recess in our, in our public schools. And separately, while it's not on the consent calendar this evening, I did just want to take a moment to acknowledge some, an upcoming training opportunity that six of our fellow community members, excuse me, committee members are going to be attending very soon along with the new superintendent later this month at the Harvard Business School. The Council of Great City Schools has launched an Accelerating Board Capacity Institute at HBS. And our committee will be among the first participants in that program this year. The institute's been custom-designed by the council using a team of faculty members from the Business School, the Kennedy School, and the Graduate School of Education to, and draws upon the council's years of hands-on experience working with urban school boards. The program will provide participants with the opportunity to explore strategic topics in urban school board management and governance, as well as with a focus on leadership skills and growth, relationships among board members, and the administration, and relationships between board members and the city administration and the community at large, how to manage conflict, build capacity to focus on district improvement, and address inequities, of course. So I want to thank the Shaw Foundation in particular, which has underwritten this committee, the committee's participation in this training through a grant that's been made to the Boston Education Development Foundation. Some might recall that the Shaw Foundation late last year supported a similar capacity-building effort at the Boston City Council. And we thank them for their ongoing support of growth in civic leadership. And so on behalf of the committee, I look forward to this remarkable training opportunity. And I want to thank Mr. O'Neill in particular, who's been instrumental with his leadership role at the Council of Great City Schools in developing in the institute. So if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the consent calendar by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. Excuse me. Our next action item is a private school license amendment request for the Toret Montessori School. You'll recall at our last meeting, Ms. Myra Cuevas, our Program Director for the BPS Early Childhood Department, and Christian, excuse me, Kristin Mancharamani, who's with us here tonight, welcome. The executive head of the Toret School presented an amendment request to serve students in grades pre-K through 6 at the facility at 300 Kamis Street in downtown Boston. At this time, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer any final remarks.
I just suggest that we approve of it.
Thank you. Open it up now once again to the members for questions or discussion. Dr. Coleman, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. So in the equity statement, it says this, the presentation does not directly impact BPS students or schools. And I want to suggest that, you know, if we have any schools that has, in our communities that provides access to kids who could go to BPS or not, that has an impact. And not in a bad way. And I think that it's part of our need to have a better sense of, you know, in our communities, what kids are being served by whom. This would be a good example. And as we approve schools, do we have any say in their placement? Or can we encourage people to start thinking wherever our higher need places where they may be able to be and reduce some of the pressure on either travel time or some of our high-need schools? And if you locate schools, private, Catholic, parochial, or charter, that how do we start thinking about this in our planning? And so I think it does have an impact. And so if we can have some kind of announcements about that, not now, but this is an example of ways of, you know, if we're treating all of our students, location of schools affects all of us. We should have a better sense of, an analytic sense of that.
Please.
I would just suggest as well, as part of this overall strategic planning and alignment of facilities to the strategic plan, that these items will be very transparent in the, in the future in terms of underlining and undergirding the 10-year facility plan to a strategic plan. And so all of, all of this would be known out and all of the impacts would be clear.
Yeah, so.
In the future. So I, my intent is that this will all be part of an overall strategic direction and 10-year facility plan moving forward.
So, you know, for example, we think of our theories of access to high-quality seats is really dependent on our ability to provide them, where someone in that community may have other access that we don't know about. And we need to track that as a public health perspective more directly and as a way to make sure that more kids are served.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman. Are there further questions or discussion? We're hearing none. I'll entertain a motion now to approve the Toret Montessori School License Amendment Request as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and I want to wish the Toret School success in their future endeavors and good luck. Our next item is, our next action item, excuse me, is the renewal of the Henderson K-12 Inclusion Plan. Excuse me, Henderson K-12 Inclusion School Innovation Plan. And you recall that at our last meeting, the Henderson Principal, Ms. Patricia Lampron, requested a five-year extension of the school's current innovation plan. At this time, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer any final remarks.
I don't have any marks at this time.
Well, thank you, Superintendent. Is there, are there any further questions or comments from the committee on last meeting's presentation? Dr. Coleman?
Do, this is the downside of having summer, so I have time to actually do more, more of my homework. One of the things, great school, wonderful, great support, but be interesting, it's a very thick document to try to get through. Any conversation about replication, scale, how does the Henderson? Any conversation about replication, scale, how does the Henderson help us? How are we using the success of the Henderson with people coming from around the world to visit and look at, to model where we're doing elsewhere in that? And that's not, and how do we, particularly we're giving a school this much more, a much more autonomy and innovation, at what level do they have responsibility to help us extend their, their success outside of their school building? That's, I didn't see it in there. I may have missed it, but I didn't see that explicitly. And I, I would advocate, as we go forward, to add, add that, particularly when we have a renewal, like, we have these great schools like Boston Green Academy, who's here today. You know, how do we then, once they get their ground and they, they demonstrate success, how do we get them structurally to provide service to other schools to extend that to more kids?
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Are you suggesting that's a requirement upon renewal, or just more in, more in the spirit of sharing and collaboration?
I, I don't want to now say it's a requirement. I wouldn't, I would not be opposed to that, but I think it should be something we should think about. And I'd love you to examine that, whether it should be a requirement, or strong encouragement, or that plan be built into their proposal. If they renew it, I'd be, I'd be open to making that explicit.
I think that's actually, that, that's a, uh, helpful observation. And to frame it in a similar way, perhaps, to the way that the, the school committee always calls upon any autonomous school that comes before us to, um, speak to what they've, um, done with, um, uh, with regard to discipline and the code of conduct. And that's a little bit different because, you know, we've adopted our own policy, of course, but, you know, it's a, it's a routine that we've gotten into. Anytime we have an autonomous school that comes before us, we ask about what their disciplinary plans are and do they align with the district? And so, I think certainly, you know, we, i- in the spirit of not necessarily making a requirement, but if we get into the regular habit of asking the same, um, uh, typical questions of every autonomous school leader, autonomous school team, um, to tell us, you know, what, what are those, what are the plans to replicate? The, uh, the successes you've had here, and share that with the rest of the district. And how does that, um, get stitched into the success of the district at large?
And I, I would add to that, since we're having the discussion, you know, how do we look to the central office to articulate how they're going to uh, grow this greatness? And what, what is the plan to take what's happening at the Henderson and allow that to be systematically extended to the similar populations elsewhere? That that's something, maybe a role for the central office is that systematic replication. That maybe not the Henderson's responsible, but certainly the central office would be.
And, and I would suggest overall, the core key value of collaboration is going to be not, not just learning from, um, other unique innovation schools, but also there's, you know, really great innovation happening in our traditional public schools as well, you know? Um, Dr. McIntyre's work at the Burke, for instance, and how can we spread that work, uh, throughout, and, and learning throughout the, um, community as well? So, yeah, that's really good.
Well, thank you again for that. Are there further questions or discussion from the committee? We're hearing none. Oh, oh, excuse me.
Apologize, I was not here at the last meeting, so, um, and I didn't have time to review the whole document. But, um, I assume the code of conduct question was asked.
I, I do, if I may make a comment, Mr. Chair, I do appreciate, yeah, Ms. Oliver Davila, Davila, we did discuss about their autonomy. And in fact, um, even with autonomy, uh, the Henderson follows the MasCor requirements for their graduates. Uh, they do have a code of conduct, uh, they do follow the BPS code of conduct, and they have a student rep to BSAC. So, the usual questions we ask, and they passed with, the headmaster passed with flying colors, and I thanked her for that. And that's an important part of my consideration on this, as I stated at that time.
Indeed. Well, thank you both. Hearing no further questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Henderson K-12 Inclusion Schools Innovation Plan as presented.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And second from Mr. O'Neil, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LoCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan, and congratulations to the Henderson School community. Um, before we move on, I want to recognize a couple folks in our audience. We have BTU President, Ms. Jessica Tang, uh, who's joined us, uh, for the meeting this evening. Welcome, Ms. Tang. And, uh, we heard a little bit, uh, earlier about the, uh, the work you're doing on inclusion with, uh, the superintendent, and we urge you to continue that work, and I can't wait to support it further. And I want to, uh, welcome from the Boston City Council, our Counselor-at-Large and Chair of the Education Subcommittee, uh, Counselor NCS Hobbie George, welcome. So, we're moving on now to our next action item. Uh, it's a memorandum of understanding for the Boston Green Academy, a Horace Mann Charter School. And you recall, uh, several members, uh, that the committee, uh, has previously approved an MOU for BGA uh, this previous April, and we were joined by the school's headmaster, Mr. Holter, uh, this evening. Due on error, however, uh, which is captured in a memorandum that was circulated to the membership by the, uh, legal advisor, uh, earlier this month, uh, the version of the MOU that was submitted to the committee for approval did not include some language that was in the version that the Department of Elementary and Secondary, uh, Education provisionally approved, including references to BGA's charter application and some reordering and rewording of existing language. These changes are not substantive, uh, but in order for, um, the, uh, school committee to, um, uh, submit a document that aligns with, uh, the items that, uh, we talked about, which included, uh, a number of items surrounding the issue of code of conduct, as well as what was provisionally approved by DESI, uh, the, uh, district is asking, uh, the school committee, and I've asked, um, for a representation, uh, myself, of this MOU this evening, so that we can, uh, re, um, approve, uh, this MOU, uh, and submit it to DESI for approval. So, um, I do want to open it up briefly to the superintendent for any further remarks. We certainly have some folks here that can describe, um, the, uh, material, uh, changes. If, um, if there are any questions, you haven't had a chance to review that memorandum in depth, um, and then we can move on to a motion.
I don't have any additional at this time.
Well, thank you, Superintendent. Are there further questions or comments from the committee? Well, I want to thank, uh, our, uh, legal advisor, Ms. Lazzat, for spotting, uh, this issue and for bringing it to our attention and, um, providing us a very brief and substantive memo and, and explaining what these changes are, which is very helpful. Uh, so, without further ado, um, I will, uh, entertain a motion once again to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Boston Green Academy, uh, for 2016 to 2021 as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Uh, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LoCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and congratulations once again, Mr. Holter. We wish you well. Uh, our next action item, eh, this evening, we've got quite a few of them here, uh, is a revision to the school quality framework policy. You recall that at our last meeting, our colleague, um, Mr., Dr. Coleman, and, uh, who's also a school quality, uh, work group co-chair, along with several other district leaders, presented three policy changes, uh, as in the form of proposals for the school quality framework. Uh, the first of these proposals was to affirm that tiers will be updated annually with considerations for the stability of choices for families. Second is updating policy language to provide the ability to improve calculation and scoring methodologies. And third, to remove the turnaround override. So, at this time, I'd like to invite the superintendent, uh, to offer any final remarks. And perhaps Dr. Coleman might want to add, uh, some final remarks as well.
Well, thank you, and I had a good talk with, um, Dr. Coleman about the school quality framework. And I actually was able to watch the presentation, uh, at the last board meeting, so I have some, uh, further information. I do need to dive deeper into it, I think, to better understand it. Um, and as we began to do the strategic planning, I know I keep coming back to that, but that's going to be a defining topic of how we do our work over the next several years, and I look forward to working with you on that.
And it is very exciting, I think, uh, allowing the school committee to look at the, uh, larger picture and not get so committed to details. So, it gives, give the, the district more, uh, flexibility to change, um, with more effective measurement. But I, in our conversation, the idea of how do we really think about quality, defining that, uh, what community stands, I think is an exciting process going forward. And I, I would like to add that I am a co-chair without a co. So, one of the things that we'd like to, I don't want to bring forth the thing with working with you, uh, Chairman LoCanto and Superintendent Cassellis, about who, who would be a good co-chair, um, from the community, not on the school committee, would be useful.
Sorry for being presumptuous.
Have some people in mind, but, um, um, that's. She didn't get, she wasn't listening.
We, we can, we can draft folks, uh, off the public's time. Um, I want to open it up now to, uh, members for, uh, questions and discussion.
I will, yes, I, I will simply state that, um, while I, I appreciate the work of the committee on this and understand and, and support the recommendations that were made. I do encourage us now, Superintendent, your, your, a new role is very timely, because this does need to be looked at. We've had some outside analysis done of the assignment plan, and some recommendations were made. And so, I did ask at the last meeting, the committee did not, um, you didn't tackle deeply the recommendations made, I believe, was, what was the term you used, Dean Coleman? The recommendations made by the outside group that looked at the assignment plan.
You mean the bar, the?
The, the, yeah, B, yeah, B, yeah. B-I-R-B, right.
Different.
Yeah.
Would they, would they, the school quality framework is the way we move beyond a determining the quality of school purely on test scores.
Yes. That was one particular recommendation of the overall assignment plan.
And we've been, and we've been evolving and increasingly sophisticated measure for that.
Right.
BAR is identified that, you, no matter what our measure we're using, we may not be able to create the kind of equal access to a high-quality school for all our kids in equal manner, that we think the home-based assignment was designed to do.
Right.
Those are two, and I, I, I would say those are separate issues. I do think their analysis and what that means is a conversation we need to take very seriously as we go forward, uh, but I would separate it from the more technical psychometric.
You're absolutely right. School quality framework was an outgrowth of one of the pieces of the assignment plan work that we did overall through the external advisory committee, and then the, and, and to develop a school quality framework was one recommendation of that. And the BARI work was on this, or not on school quality framework, on the assignment plan overall. But I do think it will be worthwhile, and, and it's a perfect time with you digging in and understanding how we do assignment, that type of thing. It'd be great to also look at some of the BARI recommendations and do an analysis of the changes that we should make based upon some of the findings that we've found.
And, and, and their deeper analysis post the presentation, I think is something that we need to bring forward and have. It's a rich conversation.
Right, and, but I view that as separate from the technical recommendations, technical adjustment recommendations that you made here that I fully support. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, and thank you again, Dr. Coleman, for your, uh, your intense work on this, uh, project. Uh, are there further questions or, uh, comments from the members? Well, hearing none, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve the revised school quality framework policy as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Is there a second? Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LoCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you once again, Dr. Coleman. I think the, the work that's been done here, uh, around the school quality framework is going to go a long way towards, um, bringing a little bit of, um, more, uh, a little bit more clarity to families that use or discover BPS, uh, website when they're searching for schools and evaluating their options, uh, a little bit more clarity in understanding where these schools, uh, rank relative to how we view them in the framework versus how the state might view them. And certainly, I think, you know, um, removing the stigma in some instances that might be attached to schools in turnaround status. Um, whereas we know from our experience at many of the schools that are in turnaround status, or in fact, improving very rapidly. And we can see with the families that are, um, uh, enrolling their students there, that they know what, um, what's going on in those schools um, quite a bit before the state does. So, I think this will, uh, do us quite a bit of good in, in, um, uh, getting our, our story out there about the, uh, the success and achievements in our district. So, thank you again. Uh, we only have two more votes, uh, to go this evening before we move on to reports. Our next action item is a collective bargaining agreement behin, between the, uh, Boston School Committee and United Steelworkers Local 2936, uh, the bus monitors, as we heard about earlier this evening from, uh, BPS relation, uh, Labor Relations Director Lisa Mackey. I'd like to, uh, invite, of course, uh, the superintendent, if she does have any further and final comments, to, uh, add those at this time. And we can certainly open it up to questions once again, uh, from the committee.
I would suggest approval, and we already, I already gave my comments earlier, so.
Thank you. And now that you've had 40 minutes to ruminate on it, uh, fellow members, if you have any further questions or thoughts, uh, Ms. Mackey is, uh, here to, uh, answer any further questions. I believe she might be. Are there further questions? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and United Steelworkers Local 2936, the bus monitors from, uh, July 1, 2016 through June 30th, 2020, as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Uh, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LoCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to my fellow members for indulging on, uh, both hearing the report and recommendation and taking a vote this evening. These are some of the lowest-paid, uh, workers in our district and certainly, uh, receiving a timely, um, uh, back wages payment for, um, the, uh, the salary increases that go back to 2016, as well as, uh, achieving some of these time off and operational changes are going to make a big difference for, uh, some of the folks that are closest to our students. Uh, so, our final action item then is actually paying these folks, which, uh, requires a FY '20 supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $819,588 to support the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and United Steelworkers Local 2936. As members know, uh, this supplemental request would be, uh, made, uh, to the city and, and to the city council for approval, uh, to come out of, uh, the upcoming budget and supplement, um, the, uh, the budget that's already been approved on behalf of the district. So, at this time, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer any final remarks.
I don't have any.
And then, are there any further questions from the committee? Well, if I can ask for one more motion to approve the FY '20 supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $819,588 to support the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and United Steelworkers Local 2936, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr., uh, Mr. Tran. Uh, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LoCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan, and, uh, congratulations to our labor relations team and to the bus monitors in achieving this, uh, settlement. We'll move on now to our first and only report this evening, which is a BPS drinking water access policy update. And at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Catherine Walsh, our BPS Sustainability and Environmental Resource Manager, as well as PJ Perskinis, our Assistant Director of Facilities Management, to please step forward with their presentation. I'd like to invite the superintendent, of course, to give her opening remarks.
Well, this has been, um, I know that our team has worked really hard on this report and also on the policy. And I know that it's been recognized across the state as one of the best policies. And so, they're going to make some recommendations to you this evening to, um, make it even stronger and better. So, I thank them for their diligence and, um, and working on this policy.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cassellis, and, um, good evening out of you and also the Boston School Committee as well. Um, in February of 18, um, we were here and presented, um, an update on our progress since the passage of the BPS water access policy. Um, we promised we'd be back with, uh, additional updates and, and, um, we are here to provide those in addition to, um, um, a, uh, proposal as well, so thank you. This is, uh, Catherine Walsh, our Environmental and, uh, Sustainability Manager, and she will bring us, uh, through the slide deck.
Thank you, PJ. So, uh, thank you again for having us here. And on behalf of BPS Facilities Management, as well as our, um, internal and external drinking water partners, which include EPA Region One, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Agency, uh, Boston Water and Sewer Commission, and Boston Public Health Commission. We are here tonight to request an update to the BPS water access policy to reflect recent changes in state and federal drinking water regulations. And while our. and federal drinking water regulations. And while our practices have been in compliance since that announcement was made, we want to ensure that our leading policy remains in compliance, and that's why we're requesting an update to that policy. In June 2016, the Boston School Committee passed this policy, which at the time was lauded by state and local officials as extremely progressive due to our voluntary adoption of the state's lead-action levels, as well as our commitment to annually testing every single unit used for drinking or food preparation, whereas the state only required us to test two schools per year. So, we were far exceeding state requirements. And as a result of our rigorous implementation of that policy, in May of 2018, we were awarded the 2018 Massachusetts Public Water System Award, STAR-L Award, which stands for Systems Taking Action to Reduce Lead as a result of our testing efforts and our efforts to reduce lead levels. We were only one of two districts in the state to receive that award last year. Now, again, as a result of changes to state and federal drinking water regulations, we are proposing a modification to the existing policy, modifying it into a two-page policy that would still be governed by the Boston School Committee and would be contemplating the annual publication of a superintendent circular that would describe all the technical and procedural implementation guidelines that relate to this policy. We propose that circular, yeah, I'm not sure, thanks. We propose this change and the addition of a circular in order to stay nimble and be able to efficiently respond to any possible future regulatory changes again. I just want to make a note before I go into my slides that this update was written in partnership and reviewed, edited, and approved by EPA Region One, Mass DEP, Boston Water and Sewer, and Boston Public Health Commission, as well as the BPS Office of the Legal Advisor. And I'll have, as part of our materials, we have three letters of support from Mass DEP, Boston Water and Sewer, and Boston Public Health Commission, because those are the three agencies we most look to for guidance on drinking water, as well as the related health guidelines. So, just to review briefly the key components of the existing policy, it requires annual testing, again, of all units used for drinking and food preparation. It requires that we deactivate any unit above fifteen parts per billion for lead and thirteen hundred parts per billion for copper in a school. And it requires the public communication of all test results. And this is something we have adhered to since the passage of the policy. Thanks to the progressive nature of the school committee's policy, BPS has achieved a number of bright spots, including bringing seventeen additional schools online for tap water since 2016, and that means installing brand-new fountains with safe lead levels since then, as well as this recognition from the state. But most importantly, the progress we've made in lead is what I'd like to point out in lowering our elevated lead levels. In 2018, less than one percent of our samples came back with elevated levels, representing only three schools, and two of those were food prep units. They were not fountains. And that is in comparison to 2016, when this work started, when twelve percent of our samples were elevated and representing fifty-eight schools. So, we've definitely made a dramatic improvement thanks to the work related to this policy that you passed. So, due to our leadership in this work and the recognition from the state, if the Boston School Committee passes this update, Mass DEP would actually like to use the update as the model policy for public school systems across the state. So, we thank you for your consideration. Now, to dive a little deeper into what those changes are at the federal and state level, previously, the EPA set a lead-action level of twenty parts per billion. So, what that meant is if any unit came back with an elevated level above twenty parts per billion, you were required to take action. Massachusetts set a more stringent level at fifteen parts per billion, and that was the level that the school committee adopted and we've been acting under. Now, we are being asked, or we are being required, excuse me, by the state and the EPA to take action on any units that are above one part per billion. So, they have removed the twenty parts per billion lead-action level. When we take action, we need to try and get those levels to the lowest possible concentrations and prioritize those actions based on samples. So, in order to be compliant with these new stricter regulations, BPS is proposing the following update to the policy. BPS will take action on units with lead levels above one part per billion to reduce those levels to the lowest possible concentrations. In continuing with the existing policy, we will continue to annually test all units used for drinking and water and food preparation and deactivate those units with test results above or equal to fifteen parts per billion or thirteen parts per billion, thirteen hundred parts per billion for copper. And this is at the recommendation, again, of Mass DEP. Actions could include installing filters, replacing a fountain with a filtered unit, or replacing a pipe. And again, these proposed policy updates have been vetted by our external partners. So, the proposed policy update would provide a number of benefits to the BPS water access policy and keep us as a leader in the state. And first and foremost, it would ensure that we're compliant with state and federal drinking water regulations. It would allow us to deactivate any individual unit with elevated level levels within the school, rather than what we are currently doing, which is deactivating an entire school for one unit that's elevated. And the reason we are proposing that is to ensure greater equitable access to drinking water. When you have one elevated level in a building, and instead of just shutting off the one and focusing immediately on that action, you're cutting off access to, say, ten other units who've had good sample results. And this is not, turning off an entire school is not recommended by our water experts. They have recommended that we turn off the elevated unit and focus our action on getting those levels as low as possible. The proposed policy update also includes current BPS communications processes, again, important around being transparent about our test results, as well as how we manage this program. And it includes how we're using and maintaining filters. At the time, the policy was passed in 2016, filter use had not yet been approved by the state. That has since changed. So, we found that it was very important to put in the policy update how we're actually using filters, how we're maintaining them, how we're changing them. Finally, again, if the policy update is passed by the school committee, Mass DEP is committing, committed to using it as the model for other school systems in the state. In closing, just to reiterate, this was not done in a silo. We could not be successful as a water program in a silo. It was, we're very grateful to our external partners, as well as the internal BPS partners who worked on this update with us and work every day on the water program with us. We have these letters of support from Mass DEP, Boston Water and Sewer, and Boston Public Health Commission, and we just want to thank the school committee, because it was your leadership that passed that progressive policy in 2016 that has led to the progress we've had now, has led us to be considered as a leader in the state. So, thank you for considering this update.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walsh, and thank you, Mr. Perskynis. Did you have anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Well, we'll open it up now to our members for questions and discussion. Mr. O'Neil?
Sure. Thank you for this, and thank you for the continued work on this. This was obviously a big issue a number of years ago. I do recall under Communications, one of the pledges was that we posted all the testing results online. Is that continuing? And if we find anything, we let immediately the parents and the teaching staff and the full professional staff in the school know?
Yes, and that will continue the same in the policy update.
And how many schools are still offline?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, wow. Game plan, timeframe on getting those back on board?
We are currently drafting a proposal for, at the request of Dr. Casilius and Mayor Walsh.
Okay. And are we talking, this is a one-year plan, a five-year plan, a ten-year plan?
Well, it's, it's a budget issue, so I think we'll work through how many years the plan will be. But that'll be part of what we present to the superintendent.
Just changing the policy to individual spigots, to use the, I'm not sure of the term you used.
Yes, units or spigots is fine.
That's right. Thank you. Does that affect the number of schools? Do, do a number of them just have one or two issues, and you think you'll be able to get them back online while you concentrate on those?
Absolutely. I think the Linden is a great example. The Linden, the entire school had to be shut off in 2016 due to one unit. And now that those units have been off for three years, the work that would need to be done would be much more intense than had we just been able to focus on the one unit in 2016. So...
So, of the eighty-nine schools that are offline right now, do we know how many are just one unit or two unit or three units versus the whole school?
We do have that data, and the majority of the schools actually don't have any fountains in them at all. Those were removed many decades ago, so it would be a matter of just installing brand-new fountains or bottle refill stations.
Okay. And lastly, how much of a difference has the filters made? Because when the policy, as you said, when the policy was first put in place, the state wasn't allowing filters. Now they are. And I think that's a great thing, because when the state experts were here talking, and then the MWRE experts were here talking, they were saying filters are going to make a big difference. So, how has that helped speed up the process of bringing schools more online? And how will that impact going forward? Because you mentioned three different types of actions, either filters, replace units that have filters, or replace the full piping, right?
The filters have actually had excellent results. And we break down our data when we get our samples based on what's unfiltered and filtered. So, for example, while this isn't all filtered, in our 2018 results, fifty-six percent of our samples came back at undetectable levels. So, we're having really good results. Another fifteen percent of the samples were under one part per billion. Another twenty-two percent were under five parts per billion. So, our spec priority would be to filter, because we're seeing really good results with that.
Both for food prep and for drinking water?
Correct. We actually prioritize filtering with our food prep, and we have a vendor that we work very closely with to ensure we're staying on top of changing those filters when needed.
Has the ability to filter sped up the process of bringing the eighty-nine back online?
It has, as well as the bottle refill stations are extremely popular with our school communities.
Right, yeah. Seen them in a number of schools already. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. If I could just interject and follow up briefly on a question the Mr. O'Neil asked at the outset. I think he was asking a question, and you used the Linden as the example, Ms. Walsh, around, you know, say we have a school that was taken offline, like the Linden, that had one failing unit, right? And it sounds like you're, from your answer, because it's been sitting there for three years and we know how heavy metals settle and pipes, that, because it's been dormant for three years, that creates a much higher barrier, if you will, for us to getting that school back online. But I think implicit in that question was, are there other schools out there that might be among the eighty-nine that might have one or two that maybe haven't been sitting as long that we can get back online much quicker now, because we know where the isolated issue was originally and can accelerate the return of some of those eighty-nine without a big capital expenditure?
Yes, we do have that data, and in some cases, that would definitely be true. And yes.
And do we have a sense of, like, maybe how many of those, of those schools might, might be in that category?
We have a detailed list of, very few schools actually have existing infrastructure, and likely, because of where we've been, we would have to replace it regardless. Really, the majority of our schools, more than seventy, actually have no fountains at all. And so, it's really more about going in and installing new fountains, rather than kind of trying to repair existing fountains.
And so, that's what creates this budgetary question?
Correct, yes.
And what then leads to what, you know, becomes a multi-year expenditure?
Correct.
And I think to your question, we've been able to bring seventeen schools online by prioritizing our list and hitting the low-hanging fruit, to answer the question that you asked. And we're reaching the point now where we need some infrastructure improvements.
Absolutely. That's very helpful. Thank you, and sorry to interrupt the order. Dr. Rivera?
Oh, yeah. So, sorry, I'm new to the school committee, so hearing about this policy, knowing that there, you know, it wasn't the media and everything, but, so I'm wondering, is this information about the, because my son is going to the Linden, so I'm a little selfish here. I didn't know, you know, that problem as a parent. How do parents know about those eighty-nine schools? It's like, I didn't know this, so, yeah.
I should clarify, the Linden, because it's offline, is provided bottled water for drinking water.
Yeah, and my son's former school was to the Sumner. But how do parents know? Is this information public?
We do. We do have on both the Boston Public Schools website and our BPS Sustainability website, the list of the thirty-six schools that are on, considered online for tap water, and the list of the eighty-nine schools that are considered offline. And we've been very appreciative of Communications, who works closely with us anytime we bring a school online. We have a rigorous communications process that we work with them and the principal on to make sure letters are sent home to families. And then we make sure we're updating the website with that change in information, as well as the annual test results. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Mr. O'Neil?
Can I just clarify for Ms. Rivera, because this was a really big issue a few years ago when this hit. Really big issue. And so, part of putting in place this policy, which was a model policy at the time, was the state, for example, said we have to sample a subsection of our schools each year, or every couple of years, I think it was, right?
Two years.
Every two years, just a sample of our schools. And we switched to every, every outlet in every school is sampled every single year, and the test results are posted online. So, any parent could look at it and see, and make conclusions for themselves, because some folks said, well, I don't trust the fifty, you know, I want to know. I want to know what's going on in my school. So, it was a very forward-looking policy at that point, well beyond what state requirements were. And actually, it not only was hitting here and in many other cities and towns, many other cities and towns in Massachusetts started looking at it after it was an issue here, and then also a lot of other big cities across the country. So, we were being inundated by districts throughout Mass and throughout the country, what policies the school committee will want to approve. And even our, you say this is going to become a model, but even the one we approved before ended up becoming a model across the city, across the state, where a lot of cities and towns all of a sudden were facing the same issue. And so, kudos to the district and the work that they did to step up and test everything every single year and post all the results and communicate with the school communities. And so, that was the genesis of my questions before. I want to make sure we are just as diligent now that parents know what's going on in the individual school community, as Dr. Rivera pointed out.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to comment and give kudos to the school committee for stepping up and doing this. And Minnesota, I fussed about this. After Flint, obviously all of us were just alarmed, and we wanted to test every single school, and we had to get state law and state policy to do so. And the fact that we couldn't get past that we, school districts had to communicate, you know, communicate that and translate those communications and do all of that, you know, it took a while fussing about that and getting this policy to the right place. So, kudos to you for stepping up and just doing it and doing the right thing. So, thanks to the team and to the school committee for that. And I recommend that we pass this. And then we'll do the work of the other eighty-nine schools. That was the exact question I had, Mr. O'Neil, was what about those eighty-nine schools? And I did ask the team to come with a plan over the next three years in terms of looking at this. And I plan to speak with the mayor about it and look at our budget and see how we could strategically remedy this issue, so that we're not wasting money every year with bubblers, but we're actually solving the real problem. And so, hopefully in the future, we'll come forward with a proposal for this committee to entertain in terms of our budgetary expenditures and what that will mean.
I'm fine with the bubblers in every school. It's having loads of these. I'm fine with the bubblers in every school. It's having loads of these all over the place that are environmentally terrible. And they run out of them in the schools, and when it's a 70, 80, 90-degree day, it becomes 100 degrees in our classrooms, because we don't have the air conditioning. It's making, the way you will put in the water refillers, and I have stood and seen the students walking right over with their personal water bottle and filling right back up again. And I think that's great. It's great to see. So the more we can get that in all of our schools, the faster we can get that in all our schools.
Right.
And have all of our food prep ones filtered, I think would be great.
We'll appreciate your support in that.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. And I agree with you. These things are toxic. All the stuff they release, not good for you to be drinking out of those anyway. So I do want to say that I know previous staff that worked on this and staff that are here now did a really good job, because I know it was the urgency at the time. So I just want to say thank you, past and present. I know it was a lot of work. So I just have one comment and suggestion, which is Dr. Casellius, that we have asked to have an update on the state of our buildings, of our facilities. And so maybe it's just at the same time, we can have an update about this together. And my, my comment is, in this presentation, I know you list previous BPS communication process and then current BPS communication processes. And I would just say that if you could list that out, what that is, because, you know, this is stuff going back to 2016. And I think, for me, it's really important. It goes back to the question that Dr. Rivera asked around families, knowing how the communication process works, what we had done before, and then what are the enhancements? Would be really great to just have it in here, so we know. And I don't know if it's possible, if it's too crazy, but if we have a way to also maybe just have another place to put this information in our climate reports, our school climate reports, as another avenue for communicating with families. I mean, I think the letter is one avenue, but I'm curious also, I know you said it so fast, so I didn't catch what all the new communication processes are. But just thinking, like creatively, of how we communicate with our families, that's not just like the letter piece. So that's my only comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I just want to add to my colleagues here, and thanking you for the work here. You know, it's important, Mr. Perskynis, you pointed out earlier, that since this original policy was passed, 17 schools have been brought in online. And when you think about it, when you look across the Commonwealth, that's 17 schools is more than, I think, the lion's share of districts that you find in the Commonwealth. So, you know, we've done very broad work in a very short period of time and become a leader, of course, in that, in that work. And, you know, there's sensible and strong changes that are being made to this policy as presented here today. They continue that leadership, and it's reflected in the letters of support that we have in our packets today from Mass Water Resources, DEP, Boston Public Health, a few other agencies here as well. So I'm glad that we're continuing to make this a priority. It's very encouraging to hear as well that the superintendent set the ground running, working with the mayor and devising a budget over a period of years to finally close the gap once and for all with the remainder of these schools, and, you know, do it in an environmentally sound way that makes sense for our budget and is for the best of our children. So can appreciate the work that you've done here enough.
Thank you.
We look forward, of course, at our next meeting in September to taking action on this proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. We have no speakers signed up for public comment on reports.
Okay. Well, is there a new business in that case from our colleagues on the committee? Hearing none. That concludes our business for this evening. Our next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 11, in these chambers, and will begin once again at 5:30 PM. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sounds like unanimous consent. Hope you all enjoy your summer. Have a lovely break and good night.